Tech as it gets.
Yeah.
Okay, we good?
We're good.
I believe so.
We're good. Okay, welcome to, welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today's January 27th at 7:00. And we have a full agenda tonight, so it's going to be fun. And we're going to start with some announcements. So, announcements.
I have one if you want to start.
Go. You can start.
I can start. I have an announcement, and I think we talked about this back in the fall, but I think we should talk about it again just very quickly here. Mr. Kozinski, our town administrator, received an award. I will show the award.
Ooh.
Very shiny. It came from the ICMA, International City County Management Association, in honor of 30 years of service in local government. And it was given to Michael J. Kozinski and is recognized for significant contributions and achievements to the advancement of local government administration. And this was awarded back in September, but he has finally received the award, so I just wanted to officially thank Mike for his 30 years of service and his continued service to the town of Milis.
Congratulations.
Very good.
Now I feel good.
I should add that to my town report.
Yes, we should add that to your town report. I can put it back in the box.
Speaking of awards.
Officially say it, so thank you.
Congratulations, Mike. Well deserved.
Yes.
Speaking of that, so I said this a little bit ago, I'm going to say it again. I found out at the beginning of January that the chair of the Select Board is responsible for recapping the year that they were chair. I found that out in January of 2025. I was the chair in 2024. It would have been nice to have found out at the beginning of 2024, and I could have taken notes, but be that as it may, we've changed it, people will find out then. But what we did decide to do was, and this is Victoria's idea. They have awards for town reports. I don't know who gives out the award, but somebody does.
The Mass Municipal Association.
The Mass Municipal Association. You don't get any, there's no money.
God, no.
There might be a plaque.
I wish there was money, although there is no money.
Let me look at your plaque and see if a plaque's worth it.
It's a nice one.
Hardly worth the work, but Victoria would like to put her editing skills to good use and wants us to prepare. It's too late for 2024, but for 2025, we would like to get the town involved in helping Milis try to get this recognition. I think they give it to, what are they, three or four or five?
There's different categories based on population, so we're in the 5,000 to 15,000 range. So they give the first, second, and third place.
Okay, so that should be a low bar, right? Five to 15, no?
There's only about 100 communities in my group.
Okay. Anywho, toward that effort, she, what did I notice? So she sent me three or four town reports that won, that were in the top, one and two and three. What do they do differently? Well, they arrange it differently. It's not a static, boring, every town report thing, you pick a template. Victoria says she will work on that piece. But the other piece of it is pictures, pictures, pictures throughout the year of events and honors and just nice pictures of Milis. So we have set up a special email, which is what?
Which is, I gotta read, too many glasses. Townreport@milisma.gov.
Townreport@milis.
You can find it on the website.
At milisma.gov through the year, starting now. If you see anything terrific, send, take a picture, make a, you have something special, you've noticed that Milis is doing, make a little story, whatever. Send it to that email address, and we're going to try to set Milis apart next year for 2025. I can see you're all just jumping out of your seats at this announcement.
Erin Reynolds is excited.
Yes.
Okay. Now maybe the next one will get more attention from you. We've decided here that we'd like to educate a little bit. I always like to educate wherever I leave, live, leave, love. We've come up with an idea to call a little piece of education we're going to share with the town at the beginning of every meeting. And we're going to call it, we call it here the wrong thing, we're going to call it a municipal moment. And what we're going to do is, we're going to take a topic that may be misunderstood or understood, and we're going to take a few minutes. And if it involves an expert in town, like maybe we'll pick real estate taxes, how does that work? We will get our assessor in, we will get our collector in. If it's just us, it will just be us. And we'll pick a topic for each meeting, we'll spend a few minutes explaining to the public some issue. Now Karen's got a list of them because people call and ask the same questions over and over again. I have a few that I've thought over the few years I've been here. One is, what is the role of the Select Board? I don't think people understand, yours truly included, what the role is of the Select Board. That would be a topic. We've had people ask public comment. What kind of public comment do you allow? We could do something on public comment. Karen, you said something like, what did you say that would be interesting?
Oh, I talked about the water meters.
Oh, yes. People ask, what do they ask?
Why we don't split the water meters, why we.
Irrigation.
Irrigation versus, thank you.
We could have something.
That's a big question that comes up at least three times a year, so yes, there is that.
What else?
I would suggest stormwater because that one is radically misunderstood.
Yep.
We're not taxing rain. It's the phosphorus control and all that other stuff, so McKay can talk about that for more than a minute if we need to.
Okay.
Mr. McKay can talk about that for days if we wanted to.
So for now, we're, let's pick one for our next meeting.
I liked the idea of the role of not just the Select Board, but all the elected boards and appointed boards. Finance Committee, School Committee, Planning Board, Select Board, FinCom.
But we're not going to invite everybody.
No, but we can just explain the, we can read the Charter and the bylaws and just explain what each of those committees do.
I like that.
Because people misunderstand what each of their different roles are.
Okay, I like that. So Karen.
Yes.
For the next meeting, which is on the what?
February 10th.
February 10th.
February 10th, the next official.
We're going to have a municipal moment about what the role of the Select Board and other boards and committees are in the town of Milis. That's number two. We have an update on, we're going to add a button. We talked about this Karen, we're going to add a button for grants, right?
Yes, working on it.
I know, but.
Slow, but we're getting there.
Right, but for moving forward.
What we want to do is probably, yeah, we're probably going to actually, what we're trying to do is get a page together where you can go by year. You'll say, you know, you want to look at 2024, what are all the grants that were received by the town, by what department, and in what amount? Just so you can kind of see the money that comes in. I don't think people realize how much money actually comes in from grants and type of things, or how much we rely, I should say, how much we rely on grants and things. It's a lot of work, but they're there, but it's a little bit of a, it's a bigger undertaking than it looks like, so we are, we are working on it.
Yes, but you can just start, I know you want to go back, but you can kind of start with 2025 as soon as it comes, right?
Yep.
I think that would be good. Because we, we, we get, when you read my synopsis of 2024, I do go through and mention at least a half a dozen grants that paid for things. And we don't, we don't say it enough, we don't say it enough that such and such, we should lead with that, but we don't say it.
No, we need to rearrange who we are.
Yes.
Well, as long as I'm, I don't care about.
Who did that?
Feel so much better now.
That's embarrassing.
We apologize to anyone who was confused.
Yes, anyone who thought this was Erin.
We'll have a municipal moment next week where we tell you who we each are, because apparently we have no idea. Okay, so that's that. Let's have an update. You said, Mike, we were working on the two parcels that.
That's correct.
At town meeting?
We are working with town council on the process of selling those parcels. And I will have an update at your next meeting as to the exact timeline and process we're looking at.
Okay, in the meantime, the list of town-owned parcels, surplus land, has been updated on the website. It is much more concise. It, it's linked to the GIS map, so you can actually find the parcel, and it has an assessed value next to it. Now I talked to the assessor and asked, where did you get these values? Well, we use a company that does it for us, so she had no answer for me. But you don't, don't pay attention to the man behind the curtain. Don't pay attention to the value that's on the list. If you are interested in a parcel, you send a letter to the Select Board, you express your interest, and then we put it on the next town meeting agenda. Hopefully it will get passed, and then there's the process of putting it out to bid, and then hopefully you end up with the parcel. But we've made it, I think, a lot easier. We got rid of a lot of columns that made no sense to anybody. Online permitting, what were we going to say?
We're working on it, it's coming soon.
So when we started online permitting, I did not know this, that should be a municipal moment. I just thought it was the building department, and I thought, well, how long is it going to take to get the building department set up? Well, we signed the contract with Permitise, I think in July, you said Karen? Well, it's every department. It's the Board of Health permits, it's the town clerk, you get your dog license. It's, it's every department. So every single department has to be hooked up and trained on how to do this. We're not just going to roll out one. That's what's taking so long. So it's coming, but it's going to be a few more months before we get it all together. And God help the first person that does it, because that's going to be fun. And finally, I liaise to the Energy Committee. And they have a survey on their webpage, which they didn't tell me about months ago, and it's over January 31, so it's four days left. It's very easy, it's a button on the homepage of the Energy Committee. I've checked it, it works, I did it, and they're asking you to complete the survey. It helps with us completing the road to getting a climate action plan, which we got grant money for, they got grant money for, to get Milis to net zero by 2050. That's the goal Massachusetts has set for us. So, is that it for the announcements, Mike?
There's one more.
One more.
Unless you have one.
What is it?
One more is that we are looking for a few committee members for a few committees. One of them is the Enterprise Advisory Committee, we're looking for a member, I believe, and now, I can't remember now, is it Economic Development Committee or it's the Energy Committee?
Energy.
It's energy, is it energy? Okay, so it's the Energy Committee. Recreation Department, we're looking for someone. And then the Planning Board, and all of those are appointed by the Select Board. The Planning Board additionally is looking to form a zoning bylaw review subcommittee. So they want a seven member, it will be appointed by the Planning Board. All of this information is on the homepage, on the left side, there's a button, it talks about jobs and volunteers. If you click on it, it lists the committees. You can click on the committee, it will bring you to their page on the website, so it tells you a little bit about the committee, if it's something you're interested in. And then again, it talks about the Planning Board zoning bylaw review subcommittee. So that's an important committee. They're going to be reviewing current town of Milis zoning bylaws and considering proposed changes and amendments, so that could be a very interesting one if anyone's interested.
What's the, I know the zoning, what's the very first one that you mentioned?
The Enterprise Advisory Committee.
Do you know what, can you explain that at all?
So they basically review the enterprise committees, so water, sewer, stormwater. They review potential abatements, I guess, and other assorted things that are related. They are an advisory committee to the Select Board. The Select Board are considered the water and sewer and stormwater commissioners. They kind of vet through things, they come and make recommendations, the board can say yes or no, but they, this is kind of like a subcommittee again.
Okay.
They assist the board by digging deeper in the weeds on a lot of those issues and coming back with recommendations and summaries.
Okay, so I liaise to the Energy Committee, so if, and they're looking for somebody, and it's, it's just so much fun that I can't say it enough. Anybody interested in, in energy and saving it, sign up. All right, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Now we're going to get to the first item, real item on the agenda, an appointment, right?
Yes, two, several appointments, Madam Chair. First, I just want to point towards a memo in your packet from the police chief. Just remind the board that Sergeant Tiberi retired from the Milis Police Department recently, and he is recommending Sergeant Tiberi for the position of Detail Police Officer due to his recent retirement. And with that, I am requesting that the board ratify my appointment of Dominic Tiberi as a police detail officer.
Okay, so do we have a motion for that, Erin?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great.
I move that the board ratify the town administrator's appointment of Dominic Tiberi as a police detail officer.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Another one, snow removal?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two positions for snow removal contractors. Again, these positions actually do the shoveling, some of the difficult physical work that our machinery can often do. There are two young men who have stepped forward for these on-call positions. And upon the recommendation of the Director of Department of Public Works, I am requesting that the board ratify my appointment of Noah Ryan and Braden Ryan as snow removal contractors pending submission of a completed work permit.
Okay, motion?
I move that the board ratify the town administrator's appointment of Noah Ryan and Braden Ryan as snow removal contractors pending submission of a completed work permit.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
We are putting all our eggs in the Ryan family basket.
I see that.
And as always, Madam Chair, we always accept additional applications for these positions. These positions are difficult to fill, and if anyone else out there is interested in being part of that team, we're happy to receive their applications.
Okay, and they don't have to be Orion?
They do not.
Okay, even better. Next, we have a hearing.
I move that the board open the hearing to consider a grant of location to install conduit by Eversource.
Second.
It's been moved in second to open the hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
I just want to add, Ellen, that Christine Cosby is on via Zoom. Christine, are you there?
Yes, this is Christine.
Hi Christine, long time no hear.
Hi, how are you?
I'm very well, thank you. Okay, so what do we got?
Okay, Paddock Lane, north of approximately 200 feet north of Rolling Meadow Drive. We're looking to install approximately 191 feet conduit at manhole 17, I'm sorry, at paddock 17075. And that would be to provide charges to number three paddock lane. And then the other petition, they kind of go right along with each other, is for service to number five paddock lane.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody know what?
We take comments if we.
We take comments? Anybody here from Paddock Lane care about, oh, look at that. Come on up, sir.
Good evening. Tom O'Connell, 18, Rolling Meadow Drive. My driveway is on Paddock Lane. And do you, you guys have the petition? So I'm 18, Rolling Meadow, which is adjacent to five paddock. I ultimately, well, magically own the electrical conduits and all the boxes. Because when we installed, we moved into 18, Rolling Meadow, we were the first ones to purchase and move into that. And when we purchased it, they were putting in the foundation and they were doing the electrical. Immediately noticed that the electrical boxes and the Verizon boxes and Comcast were all going on our property, not on the easement. So we brought that up to the town, brought it up with Mike GMPetro at the time, got the DPW involved, took measurements. And then ultimately, we were told, that's the way the developer planned it, and that's what they're going to do. So every single electrical box is on the property of the neighborhood. I don't have a problem, I've met five, and Christine just answered the question. I didn't want this work happening without five being involved also, because this petition only involves five, I mean, involves three.
Your three.
I'm the abutter of five.
Go ahead Christine.
There are two petitions, there are two separate petitions, one is for the property number three, and the other one is for the property number five.
Okay, so which one are we, which one are we talking about right now?
The petition I have in hand.
Sorry Christine, the only one that I have is for three paddock lane.
Oh, okay, they were submitted at the same time. Yeah, there's two of them, they were submitted right at the same time.
Okay.
One of them is for, at Paddock Lane, of number three.
So the only one that I, the only one that's in the packet that I received, I thought, was three, but I might have missed it. It was three paddock lane, and that's when we sent, we sent out the notices and whatnot.
Okay, well, I don't know if you want me to resubmit everything again?
Can we, since we're doing the hearing for three paddock, can we approve this piece and then do the next one at the next meeting? Or do we have to redo the hearing altogether?
I don't know, whatever was that you posted in the public hearing, did you say it was number three?
I did. Hold on, hold on, let me just look at the letter.
You.
That's me.
Three is you.
Five.
That's him.
Five is a three, and so.
All right, hold on one second, I'm just looking at, sorry, yeah, so the notice to abutters that went out was only for conduit location at three paddock lane.
So that's the only one.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, but you have to notice, you have to legally notice, yeah, so we can only do three.
So Christine, can we still go forward with the three paddock lane piece, and we can do the five on the 10th?
February 10th, yeah.
Yep.
Well, here's why I'm here.
I didn't know there were two.
Yeah, I want to know why you're here.
This is why I'm here, is because five was not included. And because, because, because this is on my property and digging is going to occur on my property, behind my fence line where we have dogs, or now one dog, we lost one. But they're going to have to come onto my property, they're going to need permission to come onto my property to get through there, so I don't have the dog out. And then they're going to have to dig on my property in order to get out to the easement to then do this 191 feet. My concern is, five was not included, and I don't want them to do three and not five at the same time.
Well, it sounds like five was intended to be included.
Right, but it just is missed.
That's, I find that now, tonight, but that's what I wanted, I guess Christine could answer that question, is can you run the conduit to include both lots without lot five being approved?
Include, I'm sorry, what was that?
So if you're, if three gets approved, and I know Eversource won't do this in the next week or so, but if three were to get approved, and you were to go out next week to do three, and then five gets approved three weeks later, are you going to have to dig on my property again to get, to get five's electrical?
No.
You'll wait, you'll wait until it's all approved.
Go ahead Christine.
Yeah, if this gets, if this gets approved tonight, I will hold this, and I will not release it to construction. It will stay with me in the rights division.
Okay, okay.
And then once, then once, once we resubmit the paperwork, or submitted, I thought it was submitted, but maybe not, but we couldn't figure that out. But once we get submitted paperwork, number five, and you have the hearing on that one, I will release both of these jobs at the same time. They will not still be done at the same time.
So I have two requests then for Eversource, that we get notified in advance so that we know that you're coming, and somebody can be at the house so that the dog's not out when you guys need to come in and do the work. Because it is fenced in, and you need to gain access onto my property in order to gain access to the electrical box, hence why this should never have happened 22 years ago. And then the other thing is having five, I don't want to hold up three, I didn't want to hold up five. I've met both, well, I know, I've known Derek for years, but I met Rob already, who is my abutter number five. And I don't want to hold their work up, and they're working off the generators right now, and they want electrical as soon as they can get it. So I just want to make sure that when it's.
Christine, is it possible that you're going to notify this guy? Because I don't believe it for a minute, but that's just me.
Notify who?
The gentleman that's speaking at five.
18, Rolling Meadow, that has your electrical box on his property and a fence line that holds the dogs.
He wants to be notified before this work is commenced.
Well, if you, if you, if you condition it on that, if you say we'll approve it. Condition it on the abuter being notified.
Prior to the commencement of the work.
And that's what we will do.
So we just put all.
Will you notify the owner of three paddock also?
Yes, we'll put that in there too.
Sure, I'll put me on there too, if you'd like.
I gave him the letter.
All right, so.
So bizarre.
Let's do that. We'll put his contact information, both their contacts information on there.
Okay, that would be great, yep.
All right, what's your second request?
So Christine, sorry, Christine, will you resend the email that has both of them in it? Because I swear I only have the three, but that's, that's okay. We'll make it work.
Oh, yeah, I'll send, I'll send everything over, and then you just let me know what work's done for you, and.
Yeah.
But like I said, if this one gets approved tonight, it's not going to go anywhere. I will not release this until, until the other one gets approved as well.
Okay.
Okay, it sounds good. Did you have another?
Yeah, it's, no, I've talked to Derek already about whether the fence is going to have to be removed or not. And I don't know if Christine would know that, but it doesn't sound like, I have an aluminum fence that, section that I don't think they're going to have to remove. But if they do.
Obviously.
We'll work that out.
Right, you mean, it has to.
I, I, I don't know that they have to remove the fence, I mean, they can install the conduit, like, run under fence.
Correct, they're going to have to dig a trench though, because that box is, your Eversource box is about two and a half feet in, past my fence line on the property. So they'll have to either hand trench or whatever, but these are things that we don't have to worry about. My main concern is I don't want to hold this up for them, they need power. But I don't want them coming in when we let the dogs out randomly and then find out that they're out there doing work.
Yeah, but not only that, don't you want to be there when they disturb anything?
I would make sure I am there when they start to do it. One, because we're probably going to lose power for a short period of time.
Right. Okay, are you good if we put the conditions? We want to get information from both of you, contact information.
Yes, and actually, if you can send me an email, that would be great. I'm going to give you my email address.
I can do the same.
So you know my email address, so it's just K, B O U, B as in boy, R E T, at milisma, all one word. Dot gov.
Okay, I'll do it.
And just send it and say, I'm blah, 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 and here's my address, and I will follow up.
Thank you.
I'll keep you guys included in the loop, so we know what's going on. Thank you.
Erin, you got the motion now?
Well, no, we need to see if there's any other public comment.
Yeah, I know, but you've got the condition so far.
Is there any, anybody else from the public want to speak on this Eversource issue? Nope.
All right.
Okay, I move that the board close the hearing to consider a grant of location to install conduit by Eversource.
Second.
It's been moved in second at the close of the hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous to close it?
Do you guys have anything else to discuss?
No, I think we're there.
I move, okay, I move that the board grant permission to N Star Electric Company, DVA, Eversource Energy, to construct and install a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary wires and cables therein, under the following.
under the following public way. Paddock Lane northerly approximately two hundred plus minus north of Rolling Meadow Drive, approximately one hundred ninety-one feet plus or minus conduit at P M H one seven zero seven five, under the condition that Three and Five Paddock Lane, as well as eighteen Rolling Meadow Drive, are notified in advance of the date of the work to be completed.
Yeah, perfect. I like it.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Be sure you don't wanna stay for the Honeydew hearing. Might be interested in that.
Only if they're bringing Honeydew. Okay, next, we have a hearing at seven fifteen, which we.
Blue pass.
Certainly have passed.
Yeah.
For a common victula license application from Honeydew.
Okay, I move that the board open the hearing to consider a common victula application by O M Donuts Incorporated, DBA Honeydew Millis.
Second.
It's been moved in second at to open the meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Now, let's talk about this, Mike.
Actually, that's probably me.
You.
Is it me?
Yes, it's you.
So O M Donuts Incorporated, DBA Honeydew Millis, has been there for quite some time. When the planning board originally approved the plan, no seating was allowed. If there's no seating allowed, you do not need a common victula license. Common victula license means you're sitting down in a restaurant and you need a license for such. Since then, they have added seating. They went back to the planning board and said, we would like to have this seating in here, blah, blah, blah. This was approved back in the spring, but unfortunately, there was a disconnect between them and the select board as we did not know that they added seating. Once they add seating, they have to apply for a common victula license, so we're just playing catch-up here on this. They did submit the common victula license application, everything is in order, they have to submit all kinds of information along with it, about the business, the hours that they will be open, et cetera, et cetera. I did not see any issues with it, I don't know if you had a chance to look through the packet, but I would see no reason not to grant them the common victula license. This is an annual license, they will be have it, and they will need to renew their license in the fall, just like anyone else who renews a license.
How many seats did they add?
That is a good question.
Do we know? I've never.
They always had space for seating, but for some weird reason, they couldn't have the seating. If you look at the plan, so now you can go enjoy your coffee and your donuts at Honeydew.
Right.
Not a lot of seating.
I don't see any number, do you?
It does not have the actual. Yes, the other, the other side of alpaca.
Have you been in there? No? Anybody in the audience been in alpaca, having a Dunkin' Donuts? How many seats do they have?
You can't say Dunkin' Donuts, they're Honeydew.
Oh, my God, Honeydew donuts. Not many?
No, I, I mean, I think it's, like I said, I think not that many people actually sit down in there, it's just that they have the option if they would like to. Uh, we can certainly get the.
Well, there's a floor plan here.
I was gonna say, there is a floor planning, it doesn't really show, the planning board could tell us exactly how many, it's not a lot. It's not a lot. It really wouldn't change anything about the way the business is being run at this point.
Okay, do we have a motion, anybody here to speak on behalf or not? Nope.
Okay, I move that the board close the hearing to consider a common victula application by O M Donuts Incorporated, DBA Honeydew Millis.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I move that the board approve the common victula application by O M Donuts Incorporated, DBA Honeydew Millis, located at eleven oh five Main Street as submitted.
And again, this is for calendar year twenty twenty-five, they will renew in the fall.
For calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I wanna close the hearing.
I already did.
Oh, so.
Yeah, we're way past that.
Way, way past that, all right, but good. All right, let me get through, scrolly, scrolly, okay. Another hearing to consider an application by Select Used Cars Corporation for an automobile class two dealer license.
I move that the board open the hearing to consider an application by Select Used Cars Corporation for an automobile class two dealer license.
Second.
It's been moved in second at to open the hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous to open the hearing?
And again, I will say that the information is in your packet, but this is Brad Anthony, and I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your first name. I'm Ann Amanda, who are the owners of Select Used Cars. They will be renting the property, formerly Signature Properties, and are looking to sell cars out of there. They have already gotten approval by the planning board.
Yep, they've been in front of us, too.
Correct.
Right?
Uh, well, no, not for this, right?
No, the planning board twice.
Planning board twice.
Right, 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 yeah.
So, again, this is a select board issued license, as a class two license, so you have the ability to approve this or not approve this, or ask any questions that you have.
Do you wanna tell us anything about what your plan is?
Well, I'm currently at one seventeen Main Street in Millis. I've been there for the last nineteen years. I was in Holliston for twenty years prior to that. All my business is local, I have, most of my business is repeat business, 'cause I try to do a good job.
Not easy in the used car business.
No, no, I, I have a, I have a good plan, so, you know, we work very hard to get nice cars. We fix them prior to them coming to the dealership. I'm not gonna do any service work at the lot, it's really a parking lot, you know, for display purposes. And, uh, not that we won't vacuum a car after a customer's been in it and so forth, but no service work will be done there, and, uh, I was dealer of the year for Massachusetts in the past, and I was in the United States of America in the past.
And you're re, why is everybody using this door all of a sudden?
Use the mic, oh, that just says use the mic.
Yeah, bring it like four or five inches.
Four inches.
I'm sorry.
Brad, I was just gonna say, there's included, included in your packet is a, a visual here of the lot, of the layout of the lot. And I include it oftentimes when they do the class two dealer licenses, they include something called conditions and restrictions, just to make sure all the ducks are in a row. So I wrote down some conditions and restrictions for the board to consider.
Yeah, let me ask a couple questions. So you, are you repur, are you repurposing the Signature Properties building?
No, I am not doing anything whatsoever to the building.
So just.
Stays just the way it is.
Putting a desk in there and a, whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And the parking lot, you're not adding any pavement or taking out any pavement?
No, ma'am, nope, not at all. Everything will stay exactly the same.
Other than more cars being there, nobody's gonna know the difference.
Correct.
And the sign?
Yes, I hope.
Okay, so you, what, what would you have, a maximum, what did you have, thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just, I, I wrote, like I said, in the conditions and restrictions, you can vote them or not vote them, these were suggested. Maximum of thirty-five vehicles total to be stored on the lot. None are to be located on the west side of the building, which is the side with the X's over here, which is per the fire chief.
Okay, hold on, just slow down a little bit, he needs to listen to these, 'cause he's.
I, I understand.
You're hearing, right? Okay, maximum of, and it looked like you put about six vehicles at the front, but you can tell us if six is the right number. Maximum of six vehicles to be located at the front of the lot perpendicular to Route nine. Is that okay?
One oh nine?
Okay, Route one oh nine, sorry. Uh, and then, like, again, for the fire chief, you have to maintain forty-two feet of clearance, and that would be for any emergency vehicles or fire apparatus that are coming onto the lot. So it's just forty-two feet of clearance between the cars here. And then for sale signs must be clearly visible in or on the windshield of sale vehicles.
Oh, yes.
Which I'm quite sure you would do anyway.
Of course.
But that's kind of a standard. So that's what I had for suggestions, just looking at some of the other lots that we have around town. It's up to you guys to make the decision.
Does that sound good to you? I don't know what, did you have restrictions in your other couple of places?
Yes, you have, well, you, there's more than that.
You have to have basically a Maroni sticker on every car, which is.
Right, they have other things, but.
Pardon me?
Sorry, I was gonna say, there are other restrictions, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Keep going, this is for the next guy, we can use this, go ahead.
Yeah, so you have to have a warranty printed on, there's a little yellow sticker that you have to have used car lemon law, that tells people that you are gonna be standing behind the repair of the car when you sell it. You also have to have two stickers on your vehicle, one that is describes the vehicle, all the particulars, cylinder mileage, the type of car it is, Toyota Camry nineteen, two thousand sixteen, blah, blah, blah. And then you have to have a, another sticker that says that this car does come with a warranty.
Okay, I'm looking more toward the site, site specific.
I don't understand.
Yeah, so I just wanna interject, so those are state requirements, which is why you don't list them. Wait, he, she's looking for, I think, you're just looking for Millis specific things, are there specific things that Medway used to say that you needed to have?
Right.
No, no.
Nothing.
No, there's these four items.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, the, the, the conditions that she read, they sound okay? You can read them?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, 'cause I'm gonna go on, I'm gonna count those six cars in the front, and if there's seven, I'm gonna come after them.
Oh, well, actually, there's six, and there's one on the side, if you, if you look at the picture.
Again, another picture.
So you can say seven, that's what you guys do, I just threw a six out there. I do not feel like a set of stone.
I just don't want it to be in violation before we even make them.
Yeah, yeah, there's six, and then there's one on the side.
Okay.
That's seven.
Right, so there's.
Change it to seven, just change it to seven, and we'll call it a day.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize.
And, and she said the west side or something, you okay with that?
Yeah, I was.
I don't know if that's actually west, it looked west to me. It's a westerly.
I don't know, yes, it's on the left side of the building. I was, I was unsure as to why I had to keep all that clear.
Fire truck.
Fire chief.
Yeah.
With the fire truck requirements, yeah, the forty-two feet is a fire.
Okay, well, we have to do what's safe.
Okay.
A hundred percent, yes, yeah, as long as.
All right, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
What do you got?
Public comment?
Oh, public comment, anybody here for this? Agenda item? Okay.
I move that the board close the hearing to consider an application by Select Used Cars Corporation for an automobile class two dealer license.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. I move that the board approve the application for a class two dealer license by Select Used Cars Corporation at thirteen fifty-two Main Street Millis and impose the following conditions and restrictions. Maximum of thirty-five vehicles total to be stored on the lot, none are to be located on the west side of the building, maximum of seven vehicles to be located at the front of the lot perpendicular to Route one oh nine, forty-two foot clearance must be maintained to provide fire apparatus access to the lot, and for sale signs must be clearly visible in or on windshield of sale vehicles.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, next agenda item, Tri-County School Project Update, Jane Harden presenting. Perfect.
Also. Yes, Dan Haynes, who's the school business guru, he's kind enough to be here tonight.
Okay, great, hi.
Hello.
Have a small PowerPoint, or I could just review the slides, whatever.
We have, we have.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, they should have to zoom in.
Yeah, let's do it.
You just zoom into the meeting.
Yeah.
Can I send you the Zoom link is the question now? Hold on one quick second. Everybody, talk amongst yourselves for a moment.
Talk amongst yourselves, you having fun?
The conduit piece was a little bit longer than I thought it was gonna be. I thought that was a slam dunk.
Hi.
Hi, I really walked into that door, as you know, and, I'm sorry about that. I had missed the issue that I was here for, but I still wanted an opportunity to speak on it. It's been a while since I've been to a town meeting, so I wasn't sure if you opened it up at the end for comments.
We do not.
We do not.
We typically.
Yeah, I'm trying to forward it here, too.
Which, which I, agenda item?
Agenda item of swearing a officer of the county. So I just wasn't sure.
Okay, okay, let, we'll get there.
H A Y.
There it is. Aunt should come, email should come up and have a Zoom in. Oh, the guest password.
I know it.
Wifi is.
You know it?
Capital S. Sandpoint.
No, I'm not connected on my phone.
Oh, you're missing out.
Is it, do we have a real one for just Millis V N B?
Yes, you don't get to go on the real one.
You don't? What is it?
Even us, we don't go on the real one.
That's the weirdest.
So because Pete names him after places he visits. And that's a viable model to do it, if you can remember what they are.
I don't see any.
Highly overrated. Longer is more secure than.
Like it is.
Yeah. Ours is the Y for guests, is welcome to the Y.
Should I say something now? I know, I know. We're not going to be taking comments on that agenda item. If you would like, you could send in a letter to the select board, put your comments in writing, and we can address them that way, but I'm not gonna address them at this meeting.
Was it pre, if I was at here at the exact time of it, but I've had the opportunity to speak?
No, we weren't taking comments.
We generally, well, past history is that generally the board doesn't take commentary on appointments that are already, you know, set up and lined up for appointment, but the board always takes input from the public. If you have, as far as if you wanted to send something in writing or communicate by email, the board does take all that information in.
You could email.
And we do read them all.
Who should I email specifically?
You can email me, the chair, Ellen, Ellen Rosenfeld, you'll find me.
Okay, yeah, um, not.
If you click on, yep, send me an email.
And if you send a copy to each of us, we all read them. Only one of us will probably respond for open meeting, but we all certainly read it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, I don't.
Out the back door and that.
That's okay, I just want you to sit through this and.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Recording in progress.
There we go.
Okay.
There we go.
That's pretty.
Small time delay, but we are here.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Um, yeah, if you wanna pass, these are, it's probably enough to go around. All right, well, thank you, great to be back in Millis. Talked a little bit about the, um, the building project, just a brief presentation, mindful of your agenda. Dr. McGuire wishes she could be here this evening, she is speaking before the Commonwealth of Mass Board of Education tonight, so she couldn't attend.
Shows that over us.
Wise choice.
I'll remember that.
So the building project, the, the timeline, I know we've shared this with you in the past. When we visited several years ago, we, we let you know that this would be quite a long process. We were actually invited into the MSBA pipeline in December of two thousand nineteen. I remember that because I drove to Boston in a snowstorm for the meeting. We, we started with our feasibility study in two thousand twenty-one. The star indicates where we are right now. We are in the site enabling and final design phase. We anticipate the long purple line, construction will continue until the summer of two thousand twenty-seven, and we still anticipate an opening in September of two thousand twenty-seven with the students.
So are you on track, like, right from the very beginning? Have you skipped a beat?
We, we were, um, we, we had some issues getting through conservation in, in the beginning, but we made up time with the great weather and the lack of rain, and that's helpful when you're moving a lot of dirt around. So the Tri-County debt, as we indicated previously, and we, we're staying with our schedule, we're issuing debt to fund this project, and we. And we, on January seventh, two thousand twenty-five, we had a bond sale and we sold a hundred and forty million dollars in school bonds. Six bids were received, the low bid was Jeffries LLC of New York, with a true interest cost of three point nine eight nine nine. Like a car, like buying a car, it's almost four. The true interest calculation includes, includes a premium received of three point four million. And under Massachusetts general law, that premium has to be put back in and the debt is refinanced. So we will pay back one hundred and thirty-six million nine fifty, instead of the, the hundred and forty million dollars that we, we borrowed. So we, we were quite happy with those results. Our financial advisor was also quite happy.
Is this short-term debt or is this?
This is long-term debt.
Long-term debt, so this is bonded.
This is bonded debt.
For the life, yes.
Yes, it is. So I know originally we had anticipated what that debt payment would look like. And we based that, those projections for each, each member community on the enrollment at the time. So that was two-one, two thousand twenty-three enrollment. So the actual enrollment, enrollment for ten-one, twenty-four, which will drive these two thousand twenty-six numbers, was a significant increase. And it was an increase for all communities and even Millis, you can see the highlighted. Millis has eleven additional students in the foundation enrollment. So that does change the, the balances from what we had anticipated. Most of the communities, obviously, are, you're seeing less of a debt payment needed in fiscal two thousand twenty-six. But Millis and Norfolk, due to your increased enrollment, have an increase above that original projection. We originally anticipated a bond rate of four point two five percent in our calculation.
And is this all the borrowing that will be needed, or is this?
No, we will probably borrow two more times. We will borrow probably twenty-eight million dollars in two years. The hundred and forty millions will, will get us through two years of construction, the bulk of the project. And at that time, we will borrow probably close to ninety percent of, of what the estimated total completion cost is. And then there will be a borrowing late two thousand twenty-eight or twenty-nine, once we know exactly what we're going to receive from the MSBA.
Okay.
This is ten years of Tri-County's foundation enrollment. We had decreases from two thousand, fiscal two thousand twenty. That would have been the ten-one, two thousand eighteen enrollment, two years behind for the fiscal years. But we had decreases going into fiscal two thousand twenty-three and, and that has turned around dramatically, especially with those two, two thousand twenty-six numbers, nine hundred and ninety-three. This next slide, this is the Millis enrollment for ten years. You've had a high of seventy. You had a decreasing enrollment for the past few years. And then you can see the eleven additional students in our, our fiscal two thousand twenty-six numbers. So this is the district as a whole and the percentages and the, the amounts for each of our communities compared to the prior year. The only community with a decrease was Walpole, with five fewer students in this. I also wanted to point out the non-resident enrollment. In those years, we, when we had declining enrollment, we were taking non-resident students to fill the seats. You can see we've gone from forty-six students, the ten-one, twenty-three enrollment for non-resident to, not, ten-one, two thousand twenty-four, we're down to twenty-five. That's twenty-one fewer students, because we're drawing those students from within the, the district. And now I just turn it over to Jane to talk a little bit about some of the community projects that Tri-County.
Thank you, I just wanted to, I had posted this on the Millis forum, but I wanted the community to be aware of some of the direct impact that the Tri-County has done in the Millis community. The most recent one is the Gazabo project at the Kennedy Terrace. And also the Shed at the Millis Library, which we use. I'm also on the Friends of the Millis Library Committee. And that has been very well-received and needed for when we do our book drive and we store the books there. Keeps them safe for the next drive. And they also had a storybook signs for the Millis Senior Center that were constructed by the students. I will say this too, that having been on the board since at least twenty nineteen, it might have been even a little bit earlier. I know it was pre-pandemic. I have been very impressed with the projects, not only that they've done in our community, but one of the things that struck me the most was the affiliation that the students at Tri-County get to interface with some of the NASA scientists. And that really struck me as an exceptional opportunity. And so as someone that's been a lifelong educator, both a public school teacher early in my career, and then as a college professor, and now as a consultant, I have to rave about the things that are going on at Tri- County and I am a big fan. Thank you.
Are we done?
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's the presentation.
Brief.
Yeah, that's a brief one, yeah, that's good, took us longer to set it up. I have a question on enrollment. When you're showing that, and it's just because I, I, the way I look at it, is that the twenty-five, twenty-six school year you're showing, when you show twenty-six, or is that the twenty-six, twenty-seven school?
That's the ten-one, two thousand twenty-four enrollment, October first, this, just this past October.
So twenty-six.
And that will drive the fiscal two thousand twenty-six numbers.
Got it, I see how you get, so that's F Y twenty-six, but that's fed by the current enrollment.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Do you have any questions? Any questions from the public?
I have a question, but I'm a Tri-County committee member.
Hi, joining you from the neighboring town of Medway. My name is Tracy Stewart. I am a, a school committee member at Tri-County, an alumni, a parent of a recent graduate. But most importantly, for this committee, I'm the chair of our legislative subcommittee and have been heavily involved in the admissions policies issue at the state level and the M A S C Legislative Committee issues that we are trying to work through as far as MSBA funding. I will implore this committee, please, to look at the hundred and ninety-fourth legislative session that just opened. We have two bills filed on the House and Senate side, both titled "An Act to Improve Access, Opportunity, and Capacity in Massachusetts Vocational Technical Education." This is not the first time these bills have been filed, but we believe that the third time is a charm. The impact of vocational projects fiscally on communities across the state is coming to a head right now. Keefe Tech was just entered into the MSBA pipeline. Senator, Senate President Spilka is paying very close attention to this issue. The Mass Association of School Committees passed two resolutions at our conference this past fall, both on vocational education, and one of them was actually filed by Tri-County. Jane sits on the legislative subcommittee with me. It's titled "MSBA Grants Evaluation for Chapter Seventy-Four." And we recently sent letters to the legislators throughout our entire district of Tri-County that represent all eleven towns. And this resolution says that MSBA currently assesses all school building projects at an equal value. And whereas vocational, technical, and agricultural high school renovations and building costs are dispersed to sending districts impacting local budgets, let it be resolved that the Massachusetts School Committee Association calls upon the legislator and the MSBA to create a tiered evaluation system. In other words, your elementary schools and your comprehensive high schools do not cost as much to build as a voc-tech school, and we're asking the state to give us a higher reimbursement rate. The, the second resolution really aligns with the expansion in capacity that the legislation is following for this coming session. So I would implore you to please write the legislators, support this legislation, support the Mass Association of School Committees and Tri-County in our efforts, because this will be retroactive to this project.
Can you send that?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, a, a question on the increased enrollment one.
Yeah.
Is, is that to increase the number of students that are allowed to attend? Because right now you're capped at a thousand, I think, right?
Yeah, and, and we're seeing wait lists and we're seeing wait lists across the state. I was just at a meeting at Smith on Saturday out in North Hampton. They're capped at six hundred students, they're a voc-tech Aggie hybrid, and we're all seeing wait lists. And what's problematic in conjunction with that right now, if anybody is reading the press or listening closely, we are looking at the possibility of some sort of lottery admissions, which, as a district that has a proportionate sending by town, and please jump in, Jane or Dan, if I'm getting a, too off track on this piece. You know, Millis has a certain number of seats. Every town in our district, through our regional agreement that was established fifty years ago, has a certain number of seats. Districts like Keefe Tech don't have that. This lottery could lead to an attempt to dismantle that proportionate send. And if you have a hundred students from Millis that are incoming freshmen that pull a lottery ticket and get that lottery seat, Millis would be on the hook for that.
What are our total number of seats? Because I asked this question when it was being built and I was told that, I was told that there is no real number.
What is it?
We are capped at a thousand.
I understand that.
What is our number?
Oh, your number, well, it's eleven percent of the total.
Eleven percent of a thousand?
Total number of children there would be.
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten, yeah.
Max.
So that would be the max number, not max per class, obviously, so you divide it by four.
Correct, yes, and I can only point, yeah, I can only point to Medway because I know we're up to somewhere between eighty-two and eighty-four right now.
Tracy, I can jump in and just.
Thank you.
Jump in.
Thank you.
So the Millis seats awarded, based on the formula, is, is thirteen freshmen.
Thirteen freshmen.
And we enrolled fourteen.
Yeah.
So you were right at that, at that number. When we, when we look at the seats, we look at trying to, even though a thousand is our number, we, we aim for.
So it's thirteen freshmen, but what's?
Thirteen freshmen per, and if the freshmen stay.
So it's thirteen, thirteen, thirteen.
It, it'll shift.
If they all stay.
It'll shift.
But it could be.
It's based on the eight, grade eight to eleven cohorts. Millis, and of that number, to the total of the eleven communities.
I'm trying to get the maximum number that Millis can send. What is that number?
So in the formula, it's thirteen, but what we do as a district, if, if Sherborne and Medfield, who have historically not used all their seats, they get reapportioned into the group.
So we can always send thirteen and it could go up from there.
It could.
It's a minimum guaranteed number, it's not an, an absolute max number.
Yeah.
Yes.
If all of the eleven communities took the seats allotted, then it would be pretty predictable year over year.
Does that happen? No.
It has not happened with Sherborne and Medfield.
With Sherborne.
Yeah.
We challenge them constantly to use their seats.
Yeah.
But it's Sherborne.
Medfield's the same way, Medfield's the exact same way, very low enrollment.
From Millis, we had eighteen applications, I think we offered sixteen students a spot. And, and we enrolled fourteen, two denied.
Two opted out, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's at least a little better because.
Is it better?
Well, it's at least a number, before we were told there was no number because it's a, whatever, however it works out. It sounded much more like the lottery when we were going through this process before, that, you know, because I asked the question, if a hundred kids applied, could a hundred kids get in? And I was told, yeah. And that doesn't sound likely or possible, actually, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Great.
All right.
What else?
I guess the other question, there's been a lot of debate on how voc-tech the voc-tech is and how much of it is AP and how much of it is college preparatory and all that. What percentage of your kids go on to college? And what percentage go into the tech and military and other options?
I believe the college is, is in the fifty-five percent range.
So fifty-five percent of the kids enrolled in Keefe, because I.
It's a small amount of military and, and the rest are.
Yeah, my, my, because my, a lot of my son's friends went there and went to Rensselaer Polytechnic, decent schools, you know, that, that my kids weren't prepared for as effectively, well, actually, my kid got in. But it was a, it was a tough thing to get into. So more than half the kids aren't going into the tech, because I've been criticized because I've said that not all the kids are going into the tech. In fact, I don't believe the majority of the kids are going into the tech work, the construction work, which my son also did. He worked construction for a lot of years without going to Keefe Tech. He should have gone, he should have gone to Tri-County, would have done well there. But, but I've been said that it is a tech school, people are saying it's a tech school, and it's really college prep and tech, it's both, it's not just a tech school.
We, we challenge our students academically, as, as we should.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but, well, I guess I do think there's something wrong with it. Because you're competing directly with our school, which is cutting AP programs. And yet, if our kids want to take AP classes, their best option is go to your school. And that's not the way a public education system should work. I wish you were turning out carpenters, laborers, if that, if those were reversed, it would have been different.
Carpentry and HVAC are two of our most popular shops.
But not as popular as college prep, because fifty-five percent are going college prep. That means forty-five percent are going into everything else you offer. So it's a college preparatory school that has a great voc-tech program, is the way I see it.
Are you going to comment on that?
Go ahead.
I, 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 I have to slightly disagree with your statement, Mr. Schultz, because if you look at our vocational programs, we have our traditional trade programs. If those trade program students are going on to college, it's typically community college for a small business degree or something along those lines. When you talk about the ones that go to Rensselaer and, and other schools like that, my daughter is a graduate of the engineering program. We have medical services programs now, we have C I S computer pro. Those C I S students, a lot of them are going on to security programs, which is a huge demand right now. And we're not, I don't believe Tri-County is completely equipped in the C I S framework to do the security piece that is in high demand. It is a stepping stone, but our co-op is through the roof. We have such great success, Jane, I don't know if you remember the number from our last meeting, I want to say it's over seventy percent of our seniors are out on co-op. So that alone, the, the demand in the, the traditional labor trades is absolutely there. When you talk about the college piece, it really is for those fields that they're not going to get an entry-level job coming right out of high school, but they're a step ahead.
Yeah, I, I'd just be curious to how many are going to highlight, what would be classified as a highly competitive college and how many are going to community colleges. That's a piece that's important to us, because this is being argued that we're opposed to voc-tech, and nobody is. I, I wish there were more, everybody coming out of there was going into the trades. And if it's, and if it's not fifty-five percent, if that's not the right way to express that number, when we come back for our next meeting, I'd like to have that number expressed in a way that, that does signify that they're going on to.
Do you have that breakdown, historical breakdown of community college fee?
Yeah.
I'm sure we can get that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll report back with, with some of that data.
I mean, and frankly, we, we can't say you can come to a voc-tech, but you can't go to college.
Well, no, I'm not expecting you to say that, that's not what I said at all. You're attracting people based on that, though, that it's a college prep program. I've seen Jane, what she says on there about the quality of it, the NASA collaborative.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I have a friend who does work for NASA, who did his own HVAC work. He figured he could learn how to build a rocket, he can learn how to do the HVAC. So I get it, but those aren't the kids that, that are your bread and butter voc-tech kids, the kids doing the co-op with NASA.
The NASA program is specifically for the engineering program. And I'll tell you, the stigma of voc-tech has changed. As a graduate of the early nineties, I was told specifically by a guidance counselor at Medway High School, if she goes there, she's not going to college.
Right.
And I still work in my field thirty years later.
No, I, I, I get what you're saying. I just think that it's important that we not stigmatize it back, but if you're, if you're running more AP programs than our local high school, I, I believe you are. If you're running, if you're putting in, if you're sending kids to highly competitive colleges, it's not anything wrong with that, but that's not how it was, that's not how it's perceived. It's perceived as we're turning out HVA techs, which we need, HVAC techs, which we need, carpenters, construction workers, which we need. But there's been a lot of comments about the college prep side.
Right.
And I just want to make sure we know what we're getting into.
If you, it's tough, because you may be competing, you're going to have a shiny new, brand-new, three-hundred-million-dollar school.
Three-six.
Thank you.
Help us.
We're struggling with our own renovation, we're struggling with overrides. We're struggling with our own renovation. We're struggling with overrides. You get to cherry pick students. We don't. And this competition thing is upsetting.
And the cherry picking, that, that piece is critical. We have, we have severe, I mean, special ed. I mentioned it last time and I was told by your previous, the group that was here, you have plenty of special ed students. I don't doubt it. You have no severely impaired students running you 100,000 plus a year because they couldn't benefit from what you offer. The town is on the hook for every one of those and we can't off source that anywhere.
No.
And so as more kids of our highly competitive side pick your school, we're left with the ones that don't meet your criteria, that you can't provide services for, and it really drowns our education program. I'm not talking about the child who has moderate special needs requirements, but I'm talking about the severe ones where we have out placements at over $100,000 a year.
I'd like to give you an example because it's actually been a very public example at Tri County. We had a graduate of our most recent class through the engineering program who has a form of MS and it's genetic and his brother has it. And he's now a student at Tri County. And we don't, we don't have a selective criteria like you would think because our IP rate is approximately 40%. And it's not just students with ADHD. It is physically impaired students.
I'm not talking about the ones that can't attend in an integrated school. We have, I don't doubt that you have that. I've got, I know a lot of people that could perform well there. We have children that can't go to any public school, that we have to send to residential facilities that we own the bill for.
Okay.
And that's a bill that you'll never have. And for us, it's millions of dollars a year for children that will never set foot into our public school. And that's a cost that those kids don't have the opportunities. I'm not blaming you for it. I think the whole state funding system is a mess on that, that, that I don't understand why a town owns those, owns those costs when it should be a state cost. But those are costs that don't ever hit your school for the kids that will never set foot in your school. So I don't know if there's a way to, on a state level, that needs to be addressed, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely something to talk to your senator and your state rep about.
We're not, listen, nobody's, nobody's blaming or casting or whatever. We're just presenting. We're presenting. This is what we're faced with. This is what our townspeople say.
Yeah.
So we bring you in and it's good to know that, that we got a number tonight. We're going to get this community school thing and whatever and try to package this more as, as trades than in, in direct competition with us.
And then I guess the other question, and this goes directly back to what you presented on the numbers, so I'll go back to the original presentation. Right now, it's running about 7,700 per child that's enrolled there for the tuition, for the construction cost. I just divided the 308, 48 by 45. Would it hit, what do you think it'll be when it's totally finished? There's another 28 million you said we need, you need to borrow.
Yeah.
Getting close to 10 to 11.
Close to the 43 million. That way we'll end up borrowing.
Another 43 million.
By the time we finish.
What do you got?
I'm getting 12 to 14 million, you know, if I'm taking, no, not quite, because I'm doing half. I'm getting 10 to probably 10-ish million, or 10, 10,000 per child, yeah, extra.
Yeah, depending on your enrollment numbers at the time.
Does that sound right?
That doesn't sound far off.
It's in the ballpark.
So what's that number?
About 10,000 extra per child. Because when I did the math at your higher interest rates by external enrollment, I got about 12,000 per child, but you got a good bond rate. So that improved.
Yeah, 77 is about right.
Yeah.
All right.
But I will provide those college numbers, you know, just so we can finish the discussion.
Yeah, because it goes on both sides. I mean, if it is really that, you know, of the 55 that go on to college, 35 are going to community college for their business degree, that, that's great.
Yeah.
And that's a different story than 55% going on to a four-year traditional college in engineering.
I know you had a student right here in Millis a few years ago who came up through the legal and protective services program and was dispatching for Millis while they were attending free community college to be able to become a law enforcement officer. So those are the benefits of having that four years at Tri County and your 1,200 hours with your certifications.
Yeah, and I see there's a big difference between a competitive four-year college and community college as far as how I perceive your role and where those kids are going.
Yeah.
That would be helpful to see.
Great, thank you.
Are we good?
Done.
We're good? Jane, I just want to touch on one thing before you pack up and leave. So, we want to meet, we, I thought we had an agreement that we were going to try to meet quarterly. Does that still sound good to you?
That's fine.
Good, great.
I would just want to make a point that at, when we had the town meeting, I gave information that night to share with the board. In December, we had one meeting before the holiday break. And so this was the first time I could be here. So.
Yeah, great.
I don't want, I don't want to be accused of refusing to attend or ignoring your request because that was not an accurate depiction.
Okay, well, I don't remember that, but okay. As long as we can move forward with quarterly, that'd be nice. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
Back.
Should we put it in the back?
Thank you. You weren't up front to be thanked.
Okay, that was good. Good information. What do we have next here? What?
Mona.
Softball, softball. Get to the important stuff.
There you go.
So what we're hearing here, right, is we're review and approval of a proposal to rebuild the girls' softball equipment shed.
Correct.
I love everything about it.
Correct.
Especially since it's not going to cost us anything.
Even before Lisa starts, I just want to say she gave a very comprehensive.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Packet of information thing. My brain is no longer working. It's 8:30.
I understand.
And it is fully supported by several people. I got a couple of emails of people supporting it. I will also say that Jim McKay, our DPW director, was very impressed and he supports it as well.
He wants to hire you for the next one.
Wants to bring you on to help us with our specs.
Yes, and so we want to say thank you and we are, I am also in support of this. And take it away.
Go.
So.
Identify yourself.
Yes. So, my name's Lisa O'Neill. I am the new president of the softball league. So I took it over from autumn this fall. We are making many improvements to the program. We have doubled the size of the first and second graders, 1-2, coming in this year for spring. We originally had two teams, but now we're going to have four with the size. We've ordered more equipment because of the more interest in the softball league. We have gotten the community involved as far as sponsorships. We've reached out some of the businesses. So a few of the businesses, businesses have already agreed to sponsor a team. So their names will be on the back of the shirt. We will advertise them on our website, on our Facebook, on our Twitter account to help the businesses as well.
Can you see, can you see Comcan on the back of the girl? No, not.
No, I have had, I've had.
Not appropriate?
Not appropriate.
I can't see that either. Sorry.
Maybe you're an adult softball league.
So don't, don't let anybody say I didn't try to give you money.
Thank you. I have had that request, but I didn't think that would be appropriate. Or should I say I wouldn't be able to show up at my daughter's softball games?
Or you'll be the best loved person there, one or the other.
Yeah, correct. So we're just excited to try to involve the community as much as possible. And we thought, and also as the shed, we've made great use of the current shed, but currently, like we mentioned in the proposal, it is deteriorating. The floor has completely gone now. So I have actually locked it up and not had anybody, can't go in there right now.
And inhabited by small creatures, perhaps.
Yes, yes, inhabited. So.
Or large.
And it would stay the same color, the Millis color. So it has stayed the same color. And we want to add some concessions in there as well. Nothing crazy, just snacks, snacks, chips, drinks, you know, that sort of thing. So.
He wants me to provide the snacks to her.
Oh, I was like, so, yes. So, and we have some fun family days planned as well. So just anything to build the program. But the shed is unfortunately falling apart.
So the only reason you're here is because it's on town property.
Correct. And we did want to expand it, expand it a little bit.
We can move, we can make up some time with this one.
Yes, yes. So this is, this is Jay, who's a contractor. And we've gone over and he is going to, we're expanding it a bit to include the concessions apart for the concessions separate of the equipment, as well as there are fences. I don't know if anybody has seen the, that we use for the pitching. The, there are some cages that are out beside the fence and we've noticed, beside the shed, we've noticed they've gotten damaged in the winter and we use them as well as the varsity.
Yeah, didn't somebody come before us a year ago to look for money?
Well, we're going to put them in the shed, so hopefully nobody will come looking for money. So we're expanding the shed to put them in the shed to make sure they're, you know, not getting damaged. So that's another reason why we want to expand the shed as well, is to put that equipment inside and also make, not an eyesore, because it is kind of an eyesore.
What's the name of your company?
Mass Improvement.
Mass Improvement? Get a little, uh?
Logo. Mass Improvement.
Advertisement here, Mass Improvement.
I'm trying to put a sign on the shed.
We also asked for the sign. So we asked for expansion, to be able to go ahead to build and also for the sign for Jay, for providing his time to be on the shed as well. An advertisement on the shed as well.
Forever?
Yes.
Okay, nice. Okay.
As long as the shed lasts, there's some incentive for it.
Are you building it for free in exchange for the sign or no?
I'm 50% off the labor.
There you go. I like it.
So I have a question, just so that I can get a visual. The shed, is it the one that has the butterfly?
Painted on it right now? Is that the shed we're talking about?
Yes, that's the shed.
All right, thanks.
You approve?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted, because there's a lot of stuff over there. So I just wasn't sure which one we were talking about.
Are you going to put a new butterfly on the new shed?
I think Gina was the one who did that.
Oh, Gina, yeah, that looks like a Gina.
I can certainly ask her.
I think it was Gina. That was part of Project Smile.
It was, through the rec. So Chrissy can tell you who did that, but yeah.
Okay. Well, what do we got? Any questions from the audience? Okay.
Are we ready for a motion?
We are.
We are.
I move that the board approve the proposal for the rebuild expansion of the Millis Girls Softball League Equipment Shed located at the Millistown Park near the varsity softball field as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous on the shed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We definitely, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, exciting. Bring on the spring.
Bring on, bring on.
Anne Marie is here. You want to, you want to make her speak and wake her up back there?
I know, Anne Marie. Review approval consulting services, community needs for adults in Millis/Medway.
So, Madam Chair, just real briefly, this is part of a $50,000 grant we received from the state legislature to further study regional initiatives between Millis and Medway with a focus on seniors. And I know that we've worked hard to come up and work with UMass Boston to come up with a, a good plan and a good agreement. And I know that Anne Marie, our COA director, has been working closely with her counterpart in Medway to come up with a good plan to, to achieve that. So Anne Marie's come in tonight and I think she's going to talk just a little bit about how we got here and what this is going to do for us.
Sounds good. Thank you. So this new earmark, thank you to our legislature, was, is going to help us to do, basically achieve step two of what we did with our first earmark, which was last year.
It goes on the website, Karen.
Yes.
Yes.
Website, grant money.
Grant number one.
So we received an earmark last fiscal year for $25,000 to do a preliminary study about shared services between the Council on Aging in Medway and the Council on Aging in Millis. And we partnered with the Collins Center in UMass Boston Gerontology to take a look at basically what programs we have, both offer, what our space looks like. Basically, they did a nice report about what two councils on aging look like on paper. What came from that is we do a lot of similar things like all councils on aging do. But the recommendation was let's, you know, if you get money again, let's do a needs assessment. Medway has not done a needs assessment of their older adults, nor has Millis. So lo and behold, we received the $50,000 from the legislature. And I called our, my friend in Medway and I said, hey, we got some money. We can possibly do something. And then we had a conversation with the principal researcher at UMass Boston Gerontology, Caitlin Coyle, who was also a part of the first study, in addition with the Collins Center. And she does a lot of these across the Commonwealth. And instead of doing a typical needs assessment of all of our older adults, we have a lot of the information already from the first one. And since we're ultimately looking about shared services between the two towns, we're going to take a look at issues that affect folks as they age and the livability about staying in these towns. So whether that's behavioral health, mental health, emotional health, financial and economic assistance. How do people feel about how they're growing older? Are they solo agers and they don't have any family? Do they have family but the family moved away? Are they worried about finances, keeping their home, transportation? You know, are their doctors close by? How are they feeling about aging? So this study, with the amount that we were allocated, will allow for to survey both towns 60 and over with a printed survey as well as online. UMass does all the data collection and then do between four to five focus groups between residents in those both towns with, to be ended in June and a report to be provided to us in the fall. So we're really excited because what should bubble up from this is hopefully ways that we can share some services, particularly around outreach and support, which is one of the biggest needs that both of our centers have. So we're really excited. So, thank you.
It's exciting.
I just have one comment that has nothing to do with what you just said. The study that came out between, with the Medway and the, and the Millis, compared the two senior centers. And remember how surprised we were, Karen, when we learned that Millis was bigger? Well, I've learned why.
Four square footage, yes.
I learned why. They included the gym.
You're talking about the square footage of the centers. Yes, that's what the first study looked at, was really physical plans and different, like what we have in our newsletters in terms of activities.
Yes, they included the gym.
Although, I will say the seniors use the gym quite a bit.
Yes, they do.
So you have a lot of programming going on there.
Yes, they do, but it sounds like.
But still, it makes us, it did add a lot of flow. That's okay.
Okay, good.
We should look at the hours that is used by the seniors when the seniors are in session, when they get that percentage of the square.
Right? I mean, they are exercising all morning long and they are, they're making a call at bed.
But I'm just saying, it's, it's a little bit of a, of a.
It probably accounts for something.
Right, and that's, right, and that's why it's nice with this new study, well, this part of the study, to really look at all those other things, because we know that seniors traverse town lines and go to different senior centers all over the place. But something that we can look at in terms of outreach and supportive services, that would also lend itself to, if we have to add positions between our two towns or something, there's a grants available for that, for support and outreach. So we're really excited. So.
This is great.
Hope it would be looked favorably upon, you folks.
Okay, so what are we supposed to do?
So, Madam Chair, I'm requesting that the board approve this agreement and with UMass Boston and the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging and authorize me to sign the agreement on behalf of the town.
Erin, you got anything?
Yes. I move that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign the professional service agreement between the Town of Millis Council on Aging and UMass Boston, represented by its Gerontology Institute for Consulting Services, as outlined on the proposal dated January 21st, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Good luck.
Thank you. I'll keep you posted and you can watch for your surveys in March. Thank you. We will announce it at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, next.
So, Madam Chair, in the board's packets, you'll see the final report from the Collins Center for the human resources review for the Town of Millis. Just to back up a little bit, this study was funded through a state grant, which.
Goes on the website, Karen?
Yes, which Karen put in for and obtained. And she headed this, headed up this project with Victoria and a number, number of other folks at the town hall to look at our, the current state of our human resource administration. And we have a very comprehensive report in your packet that has reviewed not just the human resources for the municipal departments, but the, the whole town government, including the schools. And in that report is a number of very specific recommendations for the, for the town to consider and hopefully move forward with. And Mary Carty, who was the, was the lead on this project from the Collins Center. was the, was the lead on this project from, uh, the Collins Center, um, will be coming out to, uh, do a formal presentation of this report at your meeting on February 10th.
Did she, she agree to that?
She did, 7:15.
And so, she will go through the specific, um, recommendations, um, which I am recommending that the board seriously consider for moving forward with this current upcoming budget year.
Yep.
Um, they do have some additional costs, but, um, but I'll let, I'll let Mary go through the details. But the bottom line is, um, she and her colleagues were amazed that the town was managing as well as it was, um, with the...
On the shoestring budget a tad.
With the little amount of, of directly assigned human resources currently, uh, in a community with a $40 million plus budget and, uh, many hundreds of staff.
I just wanna...
Just the town knows, right, $40 million organization, we do not have one human resources person who's just, we don't have one staff member who is just human resources.
Totally dedicated.
I have to say...
Nobody's dedicated to it. It has become, there's a lot of things to talk about next time, but anyway.
I just wanna say, just as an overview, of all the grant money, of all the studies and reports that we've spent grant money on, this one is, I'm not gonna say the most valuable, but this one is something. And I was in on, I was part of the presentation that this woman who created this gave right here in this room several months ago. It was preliminary and then she buttoned it up and, uh, delivered a final report. And, uh, it was, it's, it's, uh, it's terrific. It's well worth, uh, it's well worth looking at and it's well worth, um, taking the advice offered therein. So, she's gonna come on our next meeting on the 10th?
She's gonna come on the 10th at 7:15. I encourage people to, um, view, attend, watch.
Yes.
I think it is, it's going to open everyone's eyes a little bit.
And then at the end of it, we will post this and...
Yes. So, this is currently in the agenda packet. Um, it's posted on the website under the, um, agenda.
Okay.
Um, it's part of the packet, but we can certainly post it as a separate document as well if anyone wants to look through it. I think it's pretty interesting.
But it's worth, this woman's presentation, it's worth, uh, watching. That's all. So, great. Good?
That's exciting.
No motion, no nothing, right?
Yep.
No motion for this one.
Okay, next, we have, um...
View of goals.
Goals. So, I don't really want, did, did you guys review them?
Yeah, I looked them over.
You looked them over?
I put check marks next to ones we accomplished.
Right. Do you have any, do you wanna take another, take another moment to, for more next week or do you wanna go through them right now?
We can go through them quickly now, I think. I don't think there's, it's only one page long deliberately. And, you know, the first part's the financial management that really starts up in earnest on Monday.
Right. Well, I, I thought since we, 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 we covered so many goals, I mean, I don't wanna be that person, but we really...
No, I was gonna start at the top and work my way down.
We did a good job. So, I think that instead of having goals one time for the year, we should add some new ones, 'cause we're so good.
That's just crazy talk. We're accomplishing.
I'm not talking, yeah. All right. Craig, you want to...
It's one of our human resources studies. We could check that out.
Yeah. Um, yeah, looking at the first one is financial management. And really, it was produced a balanced budget for...
Which one are you looking at? The 25?
Look at the one that's included.
All right, good.
I hope it's the right one. Uh, balanced budget for FY26, we're gonna be working on that next.
Yep.
Uh, improve efficiency and reduce costs, library regionalization, senior center service. We could put a check marks next to senior center. Uh, DPW School Shared Field, we'll be talking about that at the budget.
Yes.
Engineering Services, we'll talk about that during the budget. If you wanna add something, we can put in HR Services under that one or some, uh, not really, yeah, it's shared between the school.
Yep.
Uh, indirect, indirect costs for enterprise funds, we haven't done much on that, but the budget's coming up.
Yep.
And produce the budget and show all sources of grants. That's your website piece.
We're doing that, yep.
And lobby the state. So, we've done that through repeated emails and texts and phone calls, individually and collectively.
Yep.
Um, enterprise funds, uh, meet with the, uh, Enterprise Committee quarterly.
We do.
Uh, investigate options to expand sewer capacity through purchase.
We are.
We are investigating. It's not on the front of the burner right now, but we're looking...
No, but Mike's having conversations with Franklin.
Yes.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Yes.
And we're pursuing more grants for PFAS remediation.
We just got one.
Yes.
Yeah.
A giant one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, infrastructure, funding for roads and sidewalks. We put a half million dollars into roads and sidewalks at the last town meeting.
Yep.
Investigate use of town-owned buildings and properties such as Lansing, Millis, we just did something with that.
Yep.
Ellis School and the Bronn Cassidy properties. So, those are all...
Well, Bronn Cassidy we're looking at for Millis Housing.
Yep.
The Ellis School, I'd like to...
We have to find out what it is.
I'd like to drop a match on it, but nobody wants me to, so.
Nobody wants you to do that. You're going down alone if you do that. We're all opposed to you doing that. Speaking for Erin, I hope that's...
We'd like to state publicly.
That is not the stance of this board.
There's nothing to do with the board.
And we will rat you out for a better deal.
We're gonna edit that out of the, uh, video moving forward.
Uh, continue to work towards affordable housing through the MBTA zoning and other state and senior, well, not, and the other part is state and senior family housing programs, where that's a 50% at this moment.
Okay.
Uh, find suitable pieces of town-owned land for housing.
We talked about that, yep.
Yeah, this kind of all rolled in together.
It is, yep.
Improve software, online resources. That was really directed at online permits and it sounds like we're heading that direction quickly.
Yeah, but we, I'm gonna be a broken record.
Go broken.
We need to get something for the capital planning people. They need to get off the spreadsheets.
Actually, we do have ClearGov coming, representatives coming to the Capitol meeting tomorrow evening to discuss a product they have, so it is being looked at.
Okay, good. I just don't want that forgotten.
I agree with you, Erin. A hundred percent.
We, are we doing something since we met with them?
Uh, they, they have...
This is a different product.
No, I know.
Yeah, they've developed new products since the last time we talked with them. So, one of their, um, representatives is gonna attend the Zoom meeting tomorrow night on the Capitol and discuss how that product works.
We should talk, we should, can we take a second to talk about the meeting we had with ClearGov to the people?
It's not on the list.
What?
Definitely.
But it's a goal.
We could put it, okay, we can talk about that. I thought we could put it under a whole topic of your moment.
We can, 'cause it's something. So, apparently, we have not been using ClearGov as it should be. Reminds me of my phone. I have two apps. I, I don't know why I have this. I could have a Star Trek flip phone. We're not. And we're not so much not, the school stopped using it completely several years ago. So, we've been paying money and not using it.
The school stopped paying for it, though, too.
Yes, they stopped paying for it. Yes.
During the budget cuts, that was one of the items that went.
Yes. So, we invited them in a couple of months ago, a month ago? We invited the person in and everything's changed. They're, all of their products are, are changed. They're better, more comprehensive. They, they, you can pluck this piece for this. You don't want that? You don't need that. So, it's, but it costs 10 times what we've been paying for nothing. So, we need to, we're, we're, we're following up with them. We have one salesperson, very good. And, um, I know that, um, the treasurer, not the treasurer, our finance director was very interested in a couple of pieces. Um, you were interested
There's a human resources piece that looks...
One piece. So, it's a lot. It's, you don't just say, all right, I wanna be on ClearGov again. This, this, there's a pie. They have a pie.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's like a pie chart.
And there's like 12 pieces and you don't have to take them all. You can pick and choose, you can add them.
It's kinda à la carte.
Uh, but you have to sign up for a year and then there's incredible training and, as you can imagine. So, we are continuing that discussion. And now I just learned that one of our boards is gonna get a, a run through.
Look at the capital planning piece, yeah.
Come on up. You're allowed.
Heidi Gilmore, 13 Evergreen. This topic is near and dear to my heart because I dug into ClearGov last fall and I was trying hard to do some comparisons, to look at the different data in it. It's largely up to date until fiscal year 2023. And I feel very passionately about having a ClearGov that can work for the town and also work for the residents, because ClearGov was so easy, once I dug into it, it was so easy to get the information I wanted to get without having to dig through tons of different files on the website.
Right, but we need to keep it up.
And have staff keep it up.
Right. So, I would like to make an offer and a challenge to you tonight. I challenge you to bring it up to date. My offer is, my background is software and technology. I would volunteer my time if you need support. I will volunteer my time to help with whatever you need to upgrade and update the software. I'm not super technical, but I could help in other areas, okay?
Yeah, I know where you live.
Yeah.
She just told us.
I think a lot of the issue, 'cause I liked it when I first saw it, that's when we first bought it. The problem is, the way stuff's classified, I think you sent an email about it, too. I mean, it was showing the reimbursement. It showed us that we had a $18 million additional to our school budget that didn't exist. So, it's, it's two sides. It's the technical side of it and it's the implementation side on our staff side. And that's where it gets tricky, as Ben, uh, working in finance, you've gotta get it coded right. So, that's where it gets really tricky.
And you're spot on. In 2023, it showed that we spent more on the school system than we took in, in revenue. And that's just not right.
Right.
So, the numbers matched up to fiscal year 2023.
And that's why the school said, I'm, I'm out, I'm done.
Yeah, they didn't have the staff and the time and everything else. Yeah.
Well, some of this will be drudge work, like data entry into however ClearGov is pulling that information. But again, I feel very passionately about this and I am willing to, to volunteer my time.
Okay, I like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi.
All right.
Okay, a little off topic, but good information.
Um, and we'll put it on our municipal minute when we get more information. Moment.
Yeah, moment, moment.
Um, next was economic development. Um, look at attracting more housing because, quite honestly, we're not going to support large commercial industrial growth, so we're gonna need more housing as our source of revenue. And we're doing that with the 3A MBTA zoning, which passed, so I'm putting a check mark there.
You are.
Yeah. Uh, clean out the large room in the basement, which has been done.
They got 10 sewing machines in there. It's their favorite room and they're making those bears.
All right.
And it's such a happy place down there. I can't even tell you. I go down there and...
It's pretty neat, actually.
Increase services for seniors across the board.
Shout out to COA.
Yeah, increase service for seniors across the board.
Yep, trying to get some parades and stuff.
Yeah, uh, improve external communication.
Yep, we're live streaming. We live streamed our very first select board meeting a while ago. We're gonna add others. Um, the subsidized housing, we did that. Our numbers are up to date with the state. I think we can throw this whole piece of paper away and start with a new one, but that's just me.
Or you just say that you, you've achieved it.
Implement online permitting, we're doing it. And if, and we need to, speaking of the senior center, when I was there yesterday, a woman caught me and said, are you ever gonna do anything about the Saturday town meeting?
I think we have to discuss it because, uh, because we had a whole, well, no, I think it's next, it'd be a fall one. I wouldn't do the annual. I wouldn't do the, the, the November one.
I'd like to...
Or the, I'm sorry, the May one.
I am one that would like, I would...
Well, I think there's a lot to look at, because we had a whole committee that looked at it not too long ago. This isn't like 25 years ago. This was...
Really?
Yeah, this was when Erin was moderator.
Yes.
You appointed this town meeting study committee.
Yes.
What happened?
Well, we gave recommendations.
No, I didn't. Jacobson did.
Oh, you, okay, Jacobson appointed it. You were the moderator.
And then I became moderator after, yeah.
So, it was right when Erin started as moderator, so six years ago.
Do we have a copy of the report?
Yeah, yeah, the recommenda-, I don't know. The recommendations that was on it, the recommendation about Saturday town meeting, it was interesting, because there's a ton of statistics. We ran the voter list. We ran the voter list.
Okay.
And the largest group that is represented at town meeting disproportionately large, way bigger than their population at town, is people over 65.
Of course.
They're the large, so moving it to a Saturday to accommodate people over 65...
Yeah.
Is it going to, is, we need to find a way to attract the 30 to 50-year-olds.
You could hold it at a rave in Boston and they're not coming.
Exactly. So, so if there's no benefit from doing it and we're getting complaints from the other group, I'm willing to try it. But if our number skews, if our number skews entirely over 65, we've missed, because we do get at least some percentage.
Well, first of all, almost...
We got sports during the day.
You will get far less young people on a Saturday because they have things going on a lot more on the weekends than they could be...
Preponderance of our population is over 60. So, you're gonna get that.
Not the preponderance, that's less than 30% of our population. It's a large percentage. Uh, you'll know the number. It's not the preponderance. The preponderance is under 60 and they are the ones that are terribly represented at town meeting. And that's the ones that we have to figure out how to increase representation for.
But every single person over 60 says that they don't go because it's at night and it's dark.
But they do go.
But they do go. That's the thing.
They go, they just complain.
Yes.
The, the, the number of people that attend who are over 60 is disproportionately more than 30% of the population, which is over 60. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing or a good thing. I'm just saying it's not...
It's just what the statistics are.
It's, we're not pulling, it's not that we're not pulling seniors. We're not pulling the new homeowner up until you turn 55, you know? And that's, that's the group that's not showing up at town meeting. And not showing up for boards, not showing up for anything, you know? Erin, thank you.
Happy to be here.
Okay, well, we have to have another discussion.
Yeah, I think we do.
I'd like to pull that study.
I, yeah, I, we can get it again and we can do another one based on the most current town meetings.
Okay.
So, yeah. And they, and those are the ones that vote in the, the elections, too.
Right.
Not the, not the presidential, but the ones in, uh, you know, the, the off-site call elections.
So, is that our last thing?
So, when do you wanna start working on your FY26 goals or do you wanna?
I, well...
Wait till the new chairman comes in, chairperson comes in.
I would agree.
Yeah.
But she's, she's hot to track, so I wasn't sure.
We can add some to yours if you want, but you will be evaluated on whatever we miss after this point.
I wanna, I wanna add some.
Tonight or...
Why don't we come back with a list to add for the next meeting?
I have a list, but we can come back with one.
Go ahead, throw it out.
Well, I still think that we should, uh, number one, I wanna get the lab, there's one last room down in the senior center I wanna give to them. It's that...
Communications room?
The what?
The communications room, the emergency.
Yes.
I don't know that we can do that, though. We have to keep that space. We need to keep that space dedicated.
Hmm, I'll have to think about that.
Sorry.
Um, I'd like to talk about, uh, the the po, the the parks department.
We'll talk about that during budgets, and that's on there already.
Okay.
Yeah, we called it a fields group, but yeah.
A fields group, parks department, whatever.
We can change the name.
Um, all right, never mind, we'll come back next week, we'll all think of some.
Yeah.
On the tenth.
Come with a couple.
Yeah.
Not next week, the tenth.
Yeah, you're running out of time in your term, so.
Okay.
Just a couple.
I mean, it's there, you know, there's plenty of things that I could throw out there. Uh, I just, uh, I'm more a realist in that we don't have any money to do most of these things, so.
Well, and I think we're coming up on our biggest goal, which is producing the budget, which includes the H R, which includes the parks department, which includes all those things on the wish list. And Aaron's point, we're not going to have enough money to do all of them.
Right.
Well, I agree.
Or or potentially enough staffing, so it's a great idea, as we love it, but with that, you remember, we're already short-staffed. We need people, I know, people.
Well, and I would say, I would say things like cleaning out more space for the senior center doesn't have to be one of our goals. It falls under provide more senior services.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we don't need to get, right? If you can figure a way to handle the communications for emergencies, why would we need an emergency communication command post anyway?
I'm going to go check that.
Yeah, we should talk more about that at some point.
What could possibly go wrong?
Speaking of which, did the, um, did the lunchroom get cleaned out?
Not entirely.
Walk down there.
It's getting there, so.
Hopefully in the next week or so.
Okay.
It's good, it's good, we have some time. Did we get an earmark for digitization?
Uh, yes, and, um, I've talked to Jim Donovan about that.
Yes.
And we're, we're looking at getting a company to start that process. It's only fifty thousand, I say only fifty thousand, because we estimate that to really do all our records, you're, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
How much to do just the emergency management room, do you think?
Um, if we were to start with that and just do that, um, that might cover it, but we'd have to see what the best way to approach it with.
Right.
Really, the...
So, well, there's tons of storage, it's all our storage, it's our only storage. Paperwork.
So not do the emergency, digitize what's in the emergency management room.
Digitize what's in it so that we could at least free up the space, but that doesn't, that doesn't solve the issue of having that emergency management spot.
Is that where everything went from the room that I...
Yes.
Okay.
So the biggest piece for the digitization, according to Jim, is not the actual taking the papers and scanning them in. It's how do you find them once they're scanned in? How are you cataloging things? How are you searching? We need to have a method to our madness, and that is a big process, if people don't follow.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough process. So the fifty thousand is just really playing a frame.
We have a lot of paper, it won't.
But that's okay, we'll just keep getting grants.
But we want to work on it, we want to get started, so, yeah.
Yes, we got to start.
It might not happen before the end of your chair.
It's fine, it's fine, I don't care.
It'll be, it'll be all in its way.
But we're working on it. I like it.
Just the important things. All right, are we, where are we?
Moving on.
Your question.
Super Bowl breakfast. Or are you done, you're done with the goals?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I forgot about you, come on up, sorry.
Hi, Paul Simpson, fifty-two Island Road. On the Cassidy Braun initiative, would it be possible to put an agenda item on a upcoming select board meeting just to give a sense of what, you know, the progress is, you know, what issues you're looking at?
Well, what issues we're looking at is the, Millis Housing is looking for a couple of, looking for a piece of land that Millis owns, um, for housing, for Millis residents. So there are two pieces, Braun and Cassidy. So we gave those two pieces hypothetically to Millis Housing.
We let Millis Housing look at them, we haven't given them anything.
Right.
I'm just going to keep digging you out of these holes.
I said hypothetically, they now, um, they're speaking with the agency that handles this, building and housing and developing and all that, and they have a consultant that they're working with, grant money. And they, put that on the list, they are, um, going to be starting to roll it out. And we will tell everybody when they, their meetings are going to be, and they're going to have forums. It's going to be very similar to what, um, happened with the senior center. They, you know, we didn't do that, uh...
On the select board level.
On the select board level, we gave it to the senior center, and they rolled out and did all the studies and whatever. So Millis Housing will be doing that sometime in the spring and rolling it out probably over the summer, and maybe pick a piece for Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah.
So when this rollout occurs, will this be, here's the advantages and disadvantages of one property versus the other?
Absolutely, yes.
And and if they can build, if they can use it or not, I mean, we don't, we don't know what makes the requirements, you know, we don't know what's fit in it. But they'll take the, everything into consideration about both properties and have time for public input.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
But you'll, you'll, there'll be plenty of information, I assure you.
And if there's something that comes up about it, we'll post.
Thanks, yeah.
Right, we'll post it.
So this was a, um, just on a side, I know you've had a long night, but, um, this was a tri board discussion, uh, the last time the tri board met, and I attended that meeting, I asked, I just want to say that was a great meeting.
Oh, thank you.
There was just a lot of great discussion about some very important topics, so I know that this is going to be something going forward, but...
Yes, we've got to schedule, we're doing for another one, actually.
I know, probably sometimes you hear a lot of negative, but I just want to give a positive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't know how to accept a positive, but...
Yeah, we do, we say thank you, we're very gracious.
You just say thank you.
At least I am, I don't know about you.
Thanks, Paul. Um...
All right.
Where are we?
Super Bowl breakfast.
Lions.
Yeah.
Oh, that's you, go, you eat it.
Yeah.
You're a lion, you're a lion.
I am a lion. Um, the Lions have an upcoming fundraiser. It is a Super Bowl breakfast on Super Bowl Sunday. It is an all-you-can-eat breakfast. This is February ninth, Sunday, from eight A M. to twelve noon, and it's ten dollars admission. Kids six and under are free, and it's at the Saint Thomas Large Hall on Main Street. Um, the Lions are looking to put up like lawn signs in various locations that, around town, that are town-owned pieces of land. And these signs would be up just until the event. So we're talking, what, like, less than two weeks or so?
Karen, we had a discussion today, right?
We did have a discussion today, so lots of people asked to put up lawn signs for varying things. So we thought it might be good to, and I know there was a long list from the Lions. And we certainly don't want to discourage anybody, but we thought maybe the board needs to pick, like, five spots. These are the five spots where signs can go whenever somebody says they want to put up signs. So they're not just willy-nilly all over any town property, and here is where they're going to go. They can put it on any private property they want as well, but as far as the town goes, there'll be five spots moving forward for anybody who requests to put signs. So we just threw that out there.
But we can, it's, that's a discussion.
That's a discussion, that was an option.
Yeah, because we get the, she gets inundated with these calls, and we don't, you know, people don't even know what is town property, and they just stick it anywhere, so I hate that, you know, I hate that most of the time.
So on the motions, we listed five spots. Do you want to add spots to that? Up to you.
So we try to pick the five most visible...
Yeah.
Well, you can pick ten, you, you, you look sad, Aaron. I don't like it when you look sad.
I know, I was going to say, how many spots do you want?
Plus five to be determined later? Aaron, I'll throw one out there for you, you can use my front yard if you want.
Yes, and again, this...
Prime location, people like it for yard signs.
You can put signs on any private property business that it will allow you to.
Ellen, we'll talk.
So you want to hear the five spots that, so the five spots were...
Listen, listen.
I see them. Yeah, I was going to say, right behind here, just so people know, right behind here at town, which you're pulling in, at the sign, directional sign in front of the fields, in front of Town Hall, as long as it's not in front of the Veterans' monuments. The intersection of Plain and Village Streets.
You know Plain and Village, which is that funky...
And I don't know if it's Towles or Toll's Corner at Route one fifteen and Orchard Street intersection when you're coming from your area. Uh, and the intersection of Curve Street and Exchange across from the Legion, there's a spot right there that you often see signs like for elections and things. If anyone can think of any other really good spots, we can add them.
By the Legion, right?
By the Legion, is that what I said? Yes.
By the, by the monument.
We're, so that I don't have to do this right the second, we're all five of these spots on their list already? I don't know off the top of my head. Okay. But...
Where's their list, Karen?
It's in the packet. They have a really, they have thirteen spots. One of them was the transfer station, though, which I think is a good idea. We could certainly add that to the list.
Transfer station's good. Let's go down the list that they've got there and see if there's anything, keep scrolling.
Really?
Yeah, you're get, you're, you're in the middle of the H R studies.
Yeah, here it is, I can't find the first page of this for some reason.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, page eighty-nine. So just, I caution you, though, and I don't care, but there's thirteen spots. If you're going to approve thirteen spots, you should approve thirteen spots for anybody who comes with any sign that they're asking for.
I know, we're not doing, thirteen's a weird number.
So I would say pick five or six.
All right, let's, let's go through these. At the Main Street, one oh nine end of Dover Road by the electrical equipment.
I don't know if, is that town property?
I don't like that. Near the welcome to Millis sign in the Main Street end of Village.
We said no to that one.
No, I'm not, okay. At the stop sign where Route one fifteen turns off Village, that's one of them, right?
That's on the list, yep.
In front of Town Hall.
Yes.
By the traffic light at Pleasant Street, one oh nine on the left, when opposite Butter Bings. I told you that one, and you...
There is no other, I was going to say, there is no other Town Hall, there is no other Lion sign in front of Town Hall, I'm not sure what that means. They probably meant where the sign used to be. Where the clock used to be? Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's not there, but yes, that's a good spot, anyway.
Okay, by the traffic light on Pleasant, is that?
Yeah, the traffic...
I don't think that's town property.
I don't know where they put it.
I don't think that's town property either. So you have to, that's what I'm saying, this list is long, but some of it may be fine, it's just not town property.
Okay, so no, and they spelled Butter Bings wrong, so they get, no.
Well, it's gone.
But they spelled it wrong. At the Curve Street, Exchange Street, Plain Street intersection on the small park near the stop sign for Curve.
That's, that's the, what I wrote, the intersection of Curve Street and Exchange across from the Legion, that's what they mean.
Oh, I'm good.
So that's fine.
Orchard Street, Middlesex, that's what I told you.
That's Towles Corner.
That's Towles Corner.
Toll's Corner, I can't say it.
Union Street at the entrance to Transfer Station.
I like that.
I like that. At the Transfer Station, Bottle Can Collection site.
Yeah, that's where the Lions...
The Lions have the thing that they collect.
How often do you go to the Transfer Station?
Well, I held a sign up there, probably.
Again, I would, the Lions can put that, I would not add that to your constant list.
I think that's a, I think that's a Lion's place.
At the entrance to the canoe launch near one fifteen over the Charles, well, that's his property.
Is that town property?
That's not our property, I don't think.
That's, uh, Cushman's property.
Yeah.
And the other one across the street's the trustees.
At the entrance to Pleasant Meadows on Pleasant Street. Who's that?
That's not our property either, is it? No. No, that's Concom property.
What's the Heritage Path entrance on Village Street?
That's not ours either, is it? Not our property.
All right, so how many you got?
Uh, six. Six.
Good.
So we did good, because that's the same one.
And I'm throwing my house in there.
Six plus the transfer station.
Put it in my house, too, they gave you one more.
Yes, so you're just adding the transfer station to the list on the motion. I'm adding the transfer station, but they can also put one on the ball and can return it. Yeah, and whatever else they want to...
He said, you could use...
You know, when you see those houses?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, so I wasn't far off.
I'm selective.
All right, so I'll make a motion, yeah.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I move that the board approve the request by the Millis Lions to place yard signs advertising the annual Super Bowl Sunday breakfast at the following locations. Park Road near the directional sign behind Town Hall, in front of Town Hall, at a distance from Veterans' monuments, intersection of Plain and Village Streets, Toll's Corner, Route one fifteen and Orchard Street intersection, intersection of Curve Street and Exchange Street across from the American Legion, and Union Street at the entrance to the Transfer Station, as well as the bottle and can display in the Transfer Station.
Kind of like six and a half. Just saying.
Count my house, there you go.
Yeah, that's all I got.
You know, we're not putting your house...
Don't put it in the motion, because I don't want it to be an official spot. My wife will kill me.
Second. Do you have a second?
Yes, second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
All right, we're on to the litter carry.
The litter carry?
What is a litter?
I really saw that and thought it was trash, but it's not, I had to read it.
But it is not, yes. It's an annual litter carry event, they did this last year, it went very well, it's by twenty-two Mohawks. Uh, and I'm not wearing, I'm not the right glasses on tonight.
What is twenty-two Mohawks?
They're an org, oh, go ahead. Go, you go ahead. They actually presented to the Lions one night. Oh, there you go. They were, um, they're an organization for veterans, they place veterans with, um, dogs, um, like therapy dogs, dogs for therapy. Like Buddy, yes, Shropshire.
Right.
Has a dog through them, yeah.
You got a dog.
You got a dog through their organization, correct? So they're pretty cool, they do a lot of things.
Very cool, because if you don't like the dog, they take it back.
And they also, this one specifically, I believe this one specifically for blah, 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 this is for suicide prevention. But anyway, the event details is there's twenty-five teams of three people. They hand-carry a one hundred and thirty-pound litter for four miles in teams of three. You can carry it on your back or or in a twenty-five-pound rucksack, you move four miles in the fastest time possible. So you can sponsor them, I guess, to do this, but basically, they're just asking for your authorization for it to go through town. Really, the majority of it's in Midway, it ends in Millis. I reached out to Police Chief, Fire Chief, D P W, everyone's in favor, said totally fine. And then they looked for the date, they originally said the June first, but they would like to do it on June eighth. Okay. Um, and I think I, did I list the time on there, too? I did, it's all in the motion. Seven to twelve, yep, okay.
Okay, let's do it.
I move that the board approve the twenty-two Mohawks annual litter carry to be held on June eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, from seven A M. to twelve P M. in coordination with the police, fire, and the D P W.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Good luck to the annual litter event. Okay, water sewer commitment?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm recommending that the board approve and sign the Water Sewer Department commitment to the collector for December of two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I move that the board approve and sign the Water Sewer Department commitment to the collector for December two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, my favorite time of the night.
I've got nothing.
I have a good one.
What have you got?
I got, well, I went to the school committee.
Oh.
Yeah.
The school committee or school building committee?
School, I went to two, both.
Well, you did go to it.
Yeah, so the school committee, there was a lot at the beginning, then everybody left. But the interesting part was, they did announce that they have studied the regionalization stuff, and there was, they reached out to every town in our, a budding town, and, uh, none of them wanted to have a conversation with us at this time.
But...
That's a polite way of saying it. But they are interested in looking at special ed options to eliminate costs there and share burden, but none of them were interested in a full, partial, or any type of regionalization. Some got back to us, the school committee chair reached out, some responded within hours, and some took time to consider it. But, uh, we were not seen as somebody who they wanted to regionalize with, or engage in conversations even to regionalize. Forget about the details, they, the towns around us, and you can't regionalize unless you have a partner. We can't compel them to regionalize with us, nor can our state rep or anybody else. So if this, their school committee is not interested, we don't even sit down at the table and talk. The second meeting, school-related also, was a school building committee. They met a few days ago, they're going to come in and speak to us on...
February fifth.
February fifth. So I'll spoil a surprise, they recommended option for a unanimous recommendation, and they'll give you all the reasons. But in short, it was, um, the only option that met all the educational priorities for the town, and it was not dramatically more expensive than anything else, so. But in short, it was, um, the only option that met all the educational priorities for the town and it was not dramatically more expensive than anything else, so.
So Wednesday, February fifth, seven o'clock. If anyone's interested and wants to come hear the presentation, Ray here in this room.
Yeah. Right, so that meeting on the fifth, uh, school committee, um, school building committee, this board.
And finance committee was invited.
Yep, finance was invited. There'll be a presentation, the same presentations that Craig and I have both been going to the school building committee meetings over the last however many months. Why they chose this option, um, and they're in front of this board, the school building committee's in front of this board and, and the school committee to ratify their choice, correct?
Well, actually, it's to vote to send that choice to the MSBA for.
Right.
Uh, for, um, consideration. Then they will come back. The MSBA will give us a cost breakdown on what they will pay for, what they won't pay for, whether it meets the education plan, whether it doesn't. You are not allowed to submit multiple choices to them. We get one bite at the apple. They'll go through all the reasons why they believe this is the best bite at the apple. They will also present a straight, I don't know, repair option. They will also present a new option. Those aren't the recommended options, but you're required to present three choices.
Okay.
So we're, they're running the gamut and that'll be what we vote on to send that to the, uh, state. This is not, um, this is not a, you know, a formal endorsement of the project, the cost and everything else. It's an endorsement that this is the best choice for the product, project. And then we will get the, um, the final costs.
Right.
We have a ballpark range now.
This is sort of a kickoff for the next phase here of the project.
I mean, they'll give us a, a range of costs, but by the time they're done with this process and hear back from the state, they will have a dollar cost, an exact amount that this is gonna cost. Right now, they can say it's in this range.
And will they have an exact, um, contribution amount?
Yes. It comes back with, the state agrees to pay this much and, uh, and that will be turned into a motion for town meeting. It's a formal contract with the MSBA.
Yep.
Once they sign that contract, they can't go below it. They can't go above it. That's, that's why I was a little surprised to hear about the tri-county. If they can go retroactive, that's wonderful. But they sign a contract for an amount and they're on the hook to pay for that, um, as they did with Clyde Brown. The other piece is they have dramatically curtailed the number of, uh, schools they're taking. So going forward, it's gonna be much, much, much harder to get selected because schools have become much, much more expensive than they anticipated. So, um, it's in our best interest to get this quote, get it figured out and see what it is instead of waiting. Because you know, Ellen, in eight years, construction's gonna be way less expensive, right? Yeah, construction costs never come down, so, um, and the state never gets more generous. So we'll see how they go with, uh, this number.
Okay, so that's the fifth at seven o'clock in this room.
Is it seven or seven thirty?
Seven.
I think I argued seven because we're.
Old.
Old.
Seven.
Okay, good.
Sorry, this is the disadvantage of being young on the committee.
Is this the only liaison you have?
Uh, those are the only two that I had. Did we pick?
Two? Why did you say two?
I had the school committee and the school building committee.
Yeah.
That counts as two.
Well, I zoomed in on the school committee. I'm not even counting that.
You didn't sit in the room.
That's true, and it went long, people, very long. Um, I had something that isn't any liaison, but I want to say anyway, we had a department head meeting. First one in a long time. Apparently, they had them a lot, but then during COVID, they went away and.
Well, not department head, planning meeting.
It was for planning projects in the community, so, but it involved a nu, a certain number of department heads.
Oh, yeah.
Are we not counting it as a department head?
Well, it's, it's not, not, not a, a town-wide department head meeting.
So are we gonna have another department head meeting?
To just have a regular department head meeting with all the departments? Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have those.
We have those periodically, not often.
But this was a specific type of department head meeting purely for.
It's a planning meeting.
Okay.
Economic development and planning and growth in the community.
Okay. Well, anyway, it was a great meeting. Bob Weiss put together, uh, is this on the website?
I don't know what you have.
The, all the, uh, things coming, coming, where we are with all the building.
It might be under the economic development committee part of it.
I don't think so, but maybe.
Anyway, basically, it was just a review of all the projects, where we are, for instance, Regency at Glenell and it's done. All the projects, all the units are online.
Yep.
Right? Um, and then it talked about, uh, Union Street is gonna be starting, the old Herman Schuh, right?
Yeah.
Um, and these are all already in the pipeline. It, I'm sorry? Good question.
We don't have dates on any of these, so.
Yeah, we don't have exact dates because it's, in large, large part, it's up to the, to the owner and the developer. So they're just in a process and, um, they'll be taking the next steps, we think shortly, but we don't know the exact time.
We do. But we've been thinking shortly for five years, so, you know, don't hold your breath. Um, but all of these projects.
We can have Bob post the list if you want.
You should. All of these projects are already, um, the state already has these listed. So as far as where we are in our ten percent forty-B, uh, number, they're already figured in.